Okay, good evening, I am going to call to order the January seventeenth meeting of the Planning Commission. Tonight is a little bit different of a format and an agenda, and so I want to extend an especially warm welcome to some people that are here that maybe are here for the first time, or haven't come much before, or maybe you're on the TV and we don't know that you're here. And tonight, as we have a special agenda and a special guest to kick off our project to work on the town plan. So my name is Susan Bersi, and I am the current Chair of the Planning Commission. And people here are Planning Commission members, Darren McLeod, Chris Brown, Wendy Baranback, and Eric Klipman, our Town Planner, Linda Blash, and our Planning Commission member who is running the Zoom. And as you know, the meeting is also available online and streaming on MMCTV. We appreciate the support from MMCTV, also I think on Comcast. So tonight, for the agenda, we have reordered the agenda so that we can address the town plan kickoff topic first. And we expect to do that for about an hour and a half, led by David White, who's sitting here in the front, and he is our consultant with his partner Steve Whitman. The town applied for a planning grant last year and received a planning grant to fund the consultants' work to lead the project, to update the project plan, the town plan. And we'll have a time for some questions and answers at the end of David's presentation. And then the Planning Commission will continue to do our regular administrative meeting for the last half hour of the meeting. You're welcome to attend, and we won't take it personally if you decide at that point that your interest has been satisfied, that you're on your way out of the door. Okay, so that's the basic plan for the evening. I'm going to, I will say that we will have an open period for a public comment right at the beginning of the meeting. And this time for public comment is open for anybody to share with us any comments or thoughts that you have basically on any topic that you want to share with the Planning Commission. And since we have a lot of people participating, which is great, we are very excited to see everybody here. Normally, we're all just talking to ourselves with maybe one lonely person on the Zoom, or one lonely person here in the room. So I think since there are that many, this many people, if people on the Zoom could use the raise hand feature, if you'd like to make the comment, and people in the room, you could raise your hand and I'll recognize you for public comment. Public comment right at the beginning is on any topic. We ask that you keep your comments brief, to about two or three minutes per person. And then, but just remember that later on, we will have a Q and A time specifically to allow questions about the actual town plan project. Okay? So with that, I will see if there are any members of the public who wish to share a comment with the Planning Commission. So the first person I'll recognize is Dave Schuler.
Yeah, hi, Dave Schuler from over on Valley's Edge. I just hope that as we launch this project this time, that you're cognizant of maybe some past failures in various Planning Commission projects. And keep in mind, as you may be looking at designating land use might be different than it is currently, to ensure that the interested parties are notified, made aware, and involved with the process. Just sending out a general note is not sufficient, but really make sure that truly the people that are affected would be notified.
Thank you. Any other public comments at the outset of the meeting? Guys, if you wouldn't mind, can you come up to use the microphone and also please? Okay, and if you would just state your name on the record.
Hi, I'm Sheri McCabe, I live on Route fifteen near the market. And we're looking to do a renovation project, and we're in the character district zone, which is proving to be very challenging. And so I just wanted to come to hear about the plan and to see, you know, what the steps are to, who to discuss that with, and to see what the future of that is going to look like, and if we're looking to do any changes.
Okay, so, thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
You get a cookie because you came up. Yes, you got a cookie just for coming. Okay, any other public comments? I think I'll assume most of these people are coming for the town plan project where we will have time for. Okay, so then I will move on to item number four on the agenda, which is to invite David White from Sterling Mountain Community Planning and Design to come forward, and we are quite fortunate to be working with David, he is a Jericho resident, and also a bona fide expert planner, having been in the industry for twenty plus years. And I will turn the floor over to him.
Great, thank you. I'm going to turn myself a little bit here, so that I don't have my back to the folks that are here in the room. And let me know if you can't hear me, you know, out there in the interwebland. So, thank you, Susan, as she said, my name is David White, I'm the I am the Principal of Sterling Mountain Community Planning and Design, based here in Jericho, I've been a Jericho resident for more than thirty years, and a professional planner in Vermont for also more than thirty years. So I'm really excited to be able to work with it, with my hometown and this important project to really think about the future of the town of Jericho, and how does the town kind of get to the next place that it desires to go. I'm going to talk a little bit about what is a town plan, and why does it, why does a community create one? What does the current town plan prioritize, very high level? It's a fairly long document, and if you want to get into the weeds, we certainly can do that at another time, but but at a very high level, what, what are some of the priorities that are in the current town plan? And what are some of the particular challenges and issues that, you know, I think the Commission has been discussing, and that we're certainly are identified in that plan that we'll, we'll be talking more about as we, as we go forward? And then finally, give you an overview of what the, the process looks like for updating the town plan, and, and how you can continue to stay involved. I really appreciate so many folks that are, that are here not only in person, but also online, and, and this, this will be recorded and available on the town's website, so more people can can access it over time. So initially, what is a town plan? So a town plan is a roadmap that a community creates in order to understand kind of what are its hopes and desires for the future of that community, and what is necessary in order to to help the town get there? It's something that is enabled within state statute, and is a requirement of any community that is going to regulate lands. One of the earlier speakers talked about the, the character code in Riverside, which is part of the town zoning ordinance, and a town can't have a zoning ordinance, and they can't amend and update their zoning ordinance without having a town plan in place first. Because the plan really sets the table. This is what we're trying to achieve, this is what's important to us, and then the zoning is one of many tools that's used to actually help a community implement that town plan. It's required of a town in the planning process that its town plan is consistent with the enabling legislation that's in statute, and particularly with the planning goals the state has for land use and development all across the state. And it needs to be compatible with the plan of the region, in this case, Shippuden County, the Ecos Plan by the Regional Planning Commission, as well as approved plans of other municipalities within the region. So it's really important that Jericho's plan fits with what Richmond's plan is, and fits with what Underhill's plan is, so that we're all working together to address regional goals, and we're taking responsibility at the local level to do the things that are necessary to achieve our own goals. So the current town plan was adopted in 2016. It was, it was amended fairly recently to include an energy chapter, which is something fairly new within the state statute, but ultimately, the plan will expire at the end of, well, beginning of next year, of 2024. In a town, under the statute, the town is required to renew and update its town plan every eight years. So this is a process that the town Jericoes have gone through for, for several decades, the town has had a town plan for quite some time, and has kept that town plan up to date, you know, I think back into the seventies. So what are the priorities in the current town? And the town plan is available on the website, there's a little bit of a more detailed presentation also on the website that talks about the town plan, but I'll just hit some of the highlights here. But these are, what's on the screen here are what the town plan identifies as its goals. What are the town's goals for future of land use and development in, into the future, over the course of the next ten and twenty years time? So it's really about how do we protect the natural landscape, the rural landscape that is Jericho, as well as how do we preserve the, the character of the villages, the three villages that are in the town? And that's, that basic concept of the character of the new, the traditional New England village, and the protection of the rural landscape, that's fundamental to what the state's planning goals are for land use and development. We, we seek to try to concentrate mixed-use development in our village centers and other urban areas, in, in, in a way to then help us protect the working landscape, the farms and the forests and the natural resources, and all of the other things that we all enjoy so much being Vermont residents. So you see that reflected here in these town goals. Just a few more things that are, that are listed here, which begin to get into some more details around implementation in addressing long-term energy needs of the town, as well as of the state transportation options. It's very important that we, we don't put all of our eggs in one basket when it comes to things like transportation, or housing, or economic development, that we, we offer and develop a wide range of choices that people can then pick what will most suit what their needs as a family, as a community going forward. So, in a nutshell, when it comes to land use and development across the town, this slide really breaks down three, three general areas. So the areas that are highlighted in red and pink here are the areas where most new development is encouraged. The town plan highlights the villages, the commercial area, the as the areas where we want to see most new development, in, in mixed-use development, development of housing, development of, of job opportunities, services that meet the needs of our community. These are where the priority areas for new development. The areas that are highlighted in yellow is largely for residential infill. This is where we want to see most of the residential development. And then the areas that are highlighted in green are really our natural and working lands, where the priority is to preserve that working landscape, to preserve those natural systems and those natural resources in those places. Yes, certain kinds and amounts of development can and will happen there, but largely, we want to preserve those resources intact so that they can be utilized as part of our working landscape, and we want to, we want to create incentives to facilitate most of the new development in the, the red and the yellow area.
David, before you go on, just for people in the audience who may not be well oriented to graphic display, can you identify the roads on there for people, so they know where exactly we're looking at?
Absolutely, so Route fifteen, if you can see my cursor here on the screen, basically runs right through the middle of this part of town, so this is Riverside. This is Underhill, the Underhill side, Underhill flat side, so this is Riverside. As I said, Route fifteen runs through the middle of this, this is Jericho Corners here. This is Brown's Trace that runs up here, and then this is Jericho Center. And Brown's Trace continuing down here. Governor Paxton Hollow National Road running out here. So as you can see, most of the anticipated development is concentrated in the two village areas along Route fifteen, and, and along Route fifteen itself. There, of course, you know, there are large residential developments that fill in here, but then other infill residential development up here, you know, near the high school, up along Brown's Trace, in here along Weaver Road. And of course, this large area right here is the range, which is, is a very important resource to the, to the town in a variety perspective, it's not just the natural resources that occur, but it's, you know, it's a very important property, property owner, natural resource, economic resource for the town, and something that I think the town really will want to, to work closely with going forward. So what are the Commission's priorities for the new town plan? Now, I took a little, I took some liberties, these are, you know, based on things that we've talked about over the course of the last several weeks, as well as just my observations and understandings as I worked on this project, and worked for the town for the last almost six months now, not just in this project, but in other things, but ultimately, the, the, the Commission's priorities are that the new plan itself is much more action-oriented, and it's much more user-friendly, that it's the kind of thing that, that you want to pick up and read, you want to pick up and understand what's going on in Jericho, what's the future of Jericho look like? What are the challenges that, that we're trying to address? That's really important, in that local officials can use this plan because it's action-oriented, it's, it's very direct in what the priorities are, of what are we going to do going forward in order to help this vision for the future of the town be implemented over time? What are, what are the things that we need to do first? What are the things that we need to do next? You know, in a short, medium, and long-range timeline, right? I forget how many action items there are in the current town plan, but it's on the order of hundred, or hundreds. And, you know, it's hard to read through. And there's a lot of duplication, and I think we can, we can go a long way to make the plan more useful. But the plan also needs to be effective at addressing the most pressing needs and issues that are facing the town. And, you know, it's not it's not some huge dramatic change that I think the town is looking for, it's, it's really about how do we do a better job of achieving the goals that we have long set out for us in the future? You know, and from my perspective, a town plan certainly by, by and large shouldn't be trying to set some radically new direction for a community. There might be parts of the community where you're looking for transformational change, but by and large, you should be working at how do we continue evolving as a community towards the direction we want to get to? And I think that's definitely the case here. How do we do a better job of facilitating growth and development in and around the village centers? And how do we do a better job of protecting the natural and working landscapes that surround us, and really comprise, you know, over seventy percent of the land area, as you saw in that map? Those are really the, the two things that we're trying to bring together through this process. So in particular, creating new housing opportunities, and housing opportunities that bring a wide range of choices for new residents, folks that want to move here, folks that want to live here. For, for those of us that have lived in Jericho for a long time, you know, housing that, that can bring our kids back to where they grew up, because they want to settle and they want to raise their kids. Places for folks like me, and some of us in the room perhaps to age in place, not necessarily to leave the community, but to be able to downsize and stay in the community with our friends and neighbors, and particularly to invite new residents, younger residents that bring new energy and, and, and help to form the foundation of what it is to be community, and particularly the economy in Jericho. And that really kind of segues into the second one about new and expanding local business opportunities. You know, we've seen over the last few years, a variety of new businesses pop up in Jericho, and it's really exciting to see these entrepreneurs to take off, but they need space, you know, somebody can only work out of their, their barn or their garage for so long, where they need to then take it to the next step. And when they're taking to the next step, they're largely forced with looking at, you know, do I have to go to Williston, do I have to go to Essex? Do I have to go to Richmond, when they want to stay here? So that's important from, from the growth and, and nurturing of those entrepreneurs, but also us as residents to have access to those goods and services that are close by. We don't have to get in our car and drive, you know, ten or fifteen or twenty minutes to another community to get those. We can, we can access that, that stuff right here, and and ultimately reduce the amount of vehicles, vehicle miles traveled, the amount of greenhouse gas emissions, and we bolster the, the local economy of the town. So what are the key challenges? We've touched on some of this already, we're not creating enough new housing, period. But we're particularly not creating enough new housing that supports new and younger and more diverse population. That, we have some of the most expensive housing anywhere in the state, and that makes it really difficult for, you know, that, SJS' presentation on affordable housing is, is awesome, because it really touches to the, to the, to the heart of, you know, bringing a school teacher to town, and, and what, what, what can a new school teacher afford? And, and is that even possible to find that kind of housing in Jericho? Well, it's really not, and again, that's something we're hearing from Jericho residents of, you know, wanting to stay in Jericho, but a fear that they may not be able to stay in Jericho, because they can't afford it. They can't afford the houses that they're in, or the property taxes they're paying, and the, and the ability to downsize would make a big difference. We're not creating enough spaces for new local businesses. Most of the new development is still happening outside of the village center, so we need to find better ways of facilitating and incentivizing new development where we want it. And our farm and forest land is being kind of gradually consumed and eroded by, you know, a small subdivision here, a small subdivision there, we're losing those open fields that, that had traditionally been available for, for farmers to use, even though they may not own them themselves. The forest land, the natural resource, and particularly the natural systems that the, that, that natural landscape supports. And the growth of the grand list isn't keeping up with the rates of rate of inflation. That's something that ultimately comes back upon all property owners over time, the, that the ongoing costs of, of running a town, or running a school district, or running, running local government, those costs increase, you know, sometimes beyond the rates of inflation, so we need to find ways to grow the grand list, and, and new development is part of the, part of how that works. So what does the process look like over the course of the next several months? We've begun this process a, a few months ago now, really beginning with doing a thorough assessment and review of the current town plan, understanding what's, what works, what doesn't, what's old, what's new that needs to be integrated, what's still relevant, updating the data and the information that's included in it. So we have a pretty good sense of what have the trends been in the community, population, housing, economics, and the like. And we've started a process of engaging the public, and this is really the kind of the, the the first kind of major activity in doing so, but, but we've had some other outreach activities online primarily so far, and then other conversations within the work of the Planning Commission, and within the work of other town boards and committees that have really been talking about these issues for a long time, and now there's an opportunity to begin to put, add to the paper. So, over the course of the next few months, we'll continue that discussion, we'll have more meetings, we'll have more dialogue around some specific topics, and hope by the end of June or early July, we'll have an initial draft of the new town plan, which really then begins a more of a conversation in earnest of, what do you think? Did we get it right? What did we miss? How do we fine tune this? Bringing us into August, and ultimately through the fall, working with the Planning Commission, and ultimately the, the select board in a, a final town plan that is adoptable by December, before the current one expires. So I mentioned, we have had some public engagement already over the course of the last month or so, over during the holiday period, actually. We started something with calling the question of the month, where folks can go online and provide responses to, to some questions that we're looking to get some perspective, get some feedback from people. So last month's questions of the month actually were three, the first of which, what brought you to Jericho? And this is just a word cloud of what those responses were, thanks to Sabina's hard work to, to, to parse out the, the key words in, in something like a hundred and thirty responses we got. And I think these all resonate with, with us, is that, you know, what brought us to Jericho? And the second question, what keeps you at Jericho? Again, I've lived here for thirty years, and again, these are all things that very much resonate with me, with having three kids that I've raised in, raised in town, gotten through the school system, and, and, you know, created a number of lifelong friends throughout the community. This is, this is the place that, you know, for many of us, we've lived longer than we've lived anywhere else. And I'm hard pressed to find another place I'd rather live. You know, I was a planning director in Burlington for, for fourteen years, but I lived here the whole time, because this is a really nice place to live, Burlington's a nice place to live too, but this better met what my needs and what my family's needs. The last question, what would make you leave Jericho? What are the things that people kind of fear about the future? And, you know, again, tax, rising taxes, overdevelopment are big issues, but, you know, the age and place question, there were, there were several people that highlighted that as a key issue. I totally get that, the lack of affordability. These are, you know, for some people, it was like, they're not leaving until they go out in a box, and that's kind of where I'm at. But, but, you know, that, that was a a common refrain. So how can I get more involved? Or how can you get more involved? I would be pretty involved, so I'd love to have more people participating in this process. Over the course of the next several months, the Planning Commission is going to earmark one of their meetings each month for a work session on a specific topic. We've laid out the conceptual schedule for that with February, beginning with land, land use. These are really the, these are the big picture topics, you know, land use, housing, the economy, and then the community facilities and services, all of the the hard and soft infrastructure that a community needs to have in place in order to make any of the other things actually work. You know, it's not just water and sewer infrastructure, but it's schools, it's, it's recreational opportunities, it's social opportunities, it's community opportunities, it's all, it's, it's that community well-being. We're planning for a community forum in early April, where we'll invite everybody who wants to come up to MNU, and we'll have probably a two-hour session, where we'll break into smaller groups. And we'll have probably a two-hour session where we'll break into smaller groups, probably centered around many of these topics. And have a more detailed conversation with a wider group of people around these things. Again, understanding what the issues are, understanding what the opportunities are for the new town plan. Again, late spring or late summer, we'll have a first draft and then beginning in August, we'll have then subsequent drafts. Based on both coming. So how can you get more involved? You're doing it right now, coming to a planning commission, talking to planning commissioners, you know, stopping stopping them on the street. Asking questions, giving your thoughts. The town's website has a link to a project page. Which has more information about this project and will continue to over time, so regularly visit them, keep coming back to it to learn more. Come to some of these meetings, come to the planning commission meetings over the course of the next few months. Come to the community event we're planning in early April. Respond to the surveys and questions we've done the month that really gives us some really valuable perspective. What what people are thinking about, what what folks priorities are. We're not talking about, you know, we're not, this isn't rocket science. This is about understanding what the community prior feels is important, what the community's priorities are. And what are the big steps that we need to take in order to to try to address them? A lot of what goes into a town plan or comes out of a town plan are what are the getting into the weeds about some of those next steps. This plan is not going to create new zoning regulations to address improvements to how we facilitate new development. It's going to provide some direction, it's gonna provide some priorities and some recommendations. But ultimately, that becomes another step in the process to flesh out those details. And certainly be looking for new draft plan and and offer your comments.
I would also add, though, that Linda is a great resource for the public also. If I could speak in your behalf, she has an office here in Town Hall upstairs. She her phone number, her email are listed on the planning commission page of the website. Newer in her role, but has a lot of great expertise and a lot of people don't like to talk in big meetings. They don't want to necessarily get into it with their neighbors. So it's important to have a one-on-one conversation with someone who can really listen and understand. And then channel that information back into the process.
And and Susan. Susan, I highlight some important point here to to this whole process of how we engage people. It's not like the 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 old days where the town would develop a new town plan and hold a public hearing. And that would be the end of it, where you're only gonna hear from the handful of people who have the time and the energy and the motivation to turn up to a public meeting. We're trying to reach as many people as we can through a variety of different channels. Because it's just not realistic for a lot of people to come to a public meeting. Some people have to work, some people have little kids at home, some people are tired. And some people are uncomfortable with kind of more of a of a of a of a public debate. They'd rather have a one-on-one conversation and so there are a variety of different tools we can use to to get everybody's perspective. Going forward. So the last part of this is is to do a little bit more of that engagement. So for those of you that are online, I'm gonna have a series of three questions here. And I invite you to put your responses into the chat.
David, I interrupt you for one second. Um, the way we have the agenda listed out is like a general Q and A, which might be helpful first. As because you gave so much good information, if people have questions, clarification, comments about what you just heard. We give you Q and A first, and then knowing that there will be a facilitated exercise. Especially since we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Great, so we do have some time for some general questions. So maybe to be organized, we should see if there's any questions here first from people that are in the room. About the material that David just presented. Role of the town plan, our process to update it, the timeline, ways for the public to get involved. What the current town plan says, a little bit what David laid out about challenges. Does anybody here have any questions, clarification about that? Oh, yeah, definitely. But, okay, so if you wouldn't mind coming up to the table, please, to ask your question. And if you wouldn't mind by beginning, please by giving us your name.
Hi, my name's Wayne Howe, and I just have a question about. Well, really to confirm, the this is about a revision of the town plan, but the zoning regulations. For those people who don't spend a lot of time looking at it, that's a different document. So this is a, this is about looking at the new town plan now. In redoing the town plan, there might be a couple odds and end zoning things that need to be adjusted and tweaked. But this really isn't a wholesale revision of the zoning regs. I just wanted to say that out loud.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
But it is a stepping stone towards doing that. We cannot do a wholesale revision of the zoning until the plan is done.
Right, right, that's the right procedure to be doing.
We can do tweaks and fix things incremental in the interim if we needed to this year. Although this is taking up the majority of our time. Yes, so you're correct.
It's 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 a very important point you make. They are two separate but very related documents. The plan lays out that road that it's kind of like, you know, when you're planting a garden, you decide where everything's gonna go. And then you get into the details of planting those seeds and 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 cultivating it. That's when the zoning ordinance comes into play because the zoning ordinance is a regulatory tool. It it regulates the land use, where's what goes where, how big. What, you know, how how, you know, traffic is mitigated, how resource impacts are mitigated. You know, it's it's much more specific document than a plan. But but you can't make wholesale changes in your zoning regulations that don't fit with what the town plan direction. Thank you.
I'm Laurel Schamendine. I live off of Skunk Hollow on John Davis Drive. Some of you may have known my late husband, Arthur, and the it's Arthur's fault business. And I bring that up as an observation. One of the things we encountered when we transferred the business to my daughter. Jericho can't do a lot about economic growth. Because there are so many state regulations. Our kitchen that had been a commercially licensed kitchen for twenty-two years. No longer can be because you can't eat a family meal in a commercial kitchen. So we would have to build an entire new kitchen, new septic and new well. In order to continue a business with a net profit of two percent, so it's not gonna happen that way. So Mariah, who does plan to continue, will have to go to a cooperative kitchen. In another community. So it I I really appreciate what you're doing, but I think it's also very important to understand. That there's a lot of things that tie our hands for economic growth, business growth. That are so far outside of anything that the state, that the town, the county. And even the state control, because that's actually federal federal mandates that the state had to incorporate. So that's.
Thank you. Hey, anybody else here in the room before we swap over to see if we have online questions? Okay, so we'll look at the, we need a minute to do a screen swap here.
Well, I don't.
Can you see? Okay, so if anybody online would like to ask a general clarifying question at this point. Before we proceed to doing a more interactive exercise. If you would use the raise hand function in Zoom or. Or wave on your camera or something to that effect. Right, the raise hand feature is on the right, it's in the reactions. It's in the tray basically at the bottom of your personal screen. There's a little face and it says reactions and then you can raise your hand. However, I see Jean Archibald is actually raising your hand. So there you go, Jean, hello, welcome.
Hello, thank you. I think I'm the one Underhill resident at this meeting. I have been be, I'm very concerned about Riverside. I've been driving by that and following the development and the meetings and the carings on about that for a long time. And right now, I think it's 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 frustrating a lot of us who live in the area. Because it's so slow moving. I understand there's zoning regulations involved. I know there's a plan. I've talked to Tetro about it. I know that they are the owners. And have developed a plan and they're waiting on, we're waiting on Jericho regulations, state regulations. I I agree with Laurel Schamendine that this is all really rough. But at the same time, I I I look at this and I see how long we've been waiting for some affordable housing. For a nice community center down there where people can walk to commercial places. And we can, we can get on with developing a really nice village center there. We've got a market that's thriving, we've got a bank, and we've got a big red building. Which I understand could possibly be housing, I don't know. So anyway, I'm just, I'm just confused a little bit about how it works with a town making a town plan. Along with of of waiting for developments in actual action that we need. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Can I address that? Little bit of a question in there, maybe you can speak to.
Sure.
Because I think actually both speakers talking relative to business here. One of the big challenges in particularly with a commercial kitchen is water, water and wastewater. You know, you you have a higher water demand, you have sanitary requirements, all of those things. That require more than your residential well and your residential septic system. Certainly in the in the Riverside area, water and wastewater infrastructure is is part of the challenge. That in order to to have more mixed use, have more concentrated development, you need a, you you need the water. And you need a place to put the wastewater and and that's where, those are things that I think we'll talk a lot more about in the town plan. Is what are our strategies to make sure that the infrastructure necessary to support this new development? Can be developed so that so that the Tetro project can move forward. So there are places for for businesses like yours to be able to stay in town.
Perhaps another way to look at it is the town plan and the zoning regulations are designed to create the conditions. In which that type of development or operations or occupations are possible. Somebody still has to come in and do it, right? We just make it possible for that to happen. We have more questions.
Okay, yep, Dave Schuler. Thank you, Sabina.
Sure, it's hard to see.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, one of the things I think was just brought up is an interesting point, though, that how are we tying this in with Underhill? Being that we share a, you know, a lot of things in common. And we also share obviously a boundary in common and Riverside is really split between Underhill and Jericho as an example. You know, if if we're doing this in a vacuum, it can certainly mean problems for Underhill. Or if Underhill does something different, it could be a problem for us. I'm thinking here when we address issues like traffic flow, traffic flow is really a, not just a individual town problem, it's a regional problem. And what you do in one town can have dramatic effects, positive or negative, in the other town. And so just I I hope that as we're looking at this, you know, we're also involving Underhill, probably more than would normally be done with just any type of other agreement. But I think this is really something that has a chance to either be successful or, to be honest, it's gonna spend a lot of our money again. With a little outcome in the end, so I'm just hoping that we're looking at this on a bigger basis as we go forward.
We we have identified various interested groups. The fire department, the school board, Underhill, the Underhill Planning Commission, the Underhill Select Board. Our entities that we will reach out to specifically as we go through the process.
And as I mentioned, state statute really requires municipalities to collaborate with their neighbors in the development of a town plan. And then through the adoption process and review process of the Regional Planning Commission to make sure that we've addressed. Those mutual concerns and issues.
And hopefully you, just the normal populations of the town is also involved. You know, not just the special individual groups, because that that sometimes has has not been the case.
Okay, any other hands? No?
If Jean and David can put their hands down.
Yes, if you guys can reverse that process. Reed Spence, hello.
Hi, folks. Let me get the video on. Can you see and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. My interest was piqued a little bit earlier when Dave White was talking about land use. And about, I think it's an upcoming meeting, maybe in the spring or summer where land use is discussed. And I wonder if. If I could talk with either Linda, the town planner, or or this group. And see where you're at as far as understanding and and mapping towns' land use. I've been in discussion with both Sabina and another member of the Conservation Commission. About certain kinds of land use, ag and forest. But I but I just am very interested in knowing like where where you've gotten to so far. Are you using data that's, you know, many years old? Or is someone already updating that data? And so I'd like to talk with someone about that, not sure who.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to send me an email, Reed, go to the website, Jericho website, find my email. And we can either schedule a phone call or have a sit down. And I just.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the. The work session on land use is the first one, and that's in February. Although land use really will permeate all of the discussions. And the question of the month, that will be the online question where we hope to hear from. We're gonna beat a hundred and thirty this next question, right, everybody? So that will also be about land use, so those are opportunities for lots of people to participate in that. And we'll, we will talk the date of that meeting, that's February seventh, right? The land use meeting, it's February seventh, if you'd like to listen in or join us for that discussion. And one of the reasons the state requires towns to update their town plan at least once every eight years now. Is precisely, or one of the main reasons is to make sure that the data is as up to date as possible. So with new census, new school enrollment data, new financial data. New natural resources mapping data. That there are many projects going on in parallel that will feed into the updated town plan this summer. So we hope that we're not using super old data anymore. For this go around, or we're, we know we won't be. Okay, any other online, uh, questions, if you would use a raise hand feature or wave? Yes. Oh, it used to be, so Sabina, you have a whole screen there. Okay, okay, so I think we can now proceed. David, back to you, the exercise. Where we hope people will participate online in a slightly more structured way.
So as I mentioned before, I've got three questions. Um, invite you all to, uh, those of you that are online to, um, put your responses in the chat. And then we can capture those and, and record them and summarize them later, and for folks who are here in the room. I have some sticky notes. I don't know if, uh, there's a couple of pens over here, but.
Do we need more pens?
Probably could use a handful more pens, but. I'll just, actually, I'll, hands around, you can just take a small stack if you like, and I've got a couple left for pens here. And share. I know we've talked about this a little bit, but I, I'd like to get what your perspective is. Um, as being some of the most important issues or challenges that are facing Jericho either today or, or into the future. You know, feel free to just make a list and again, we'll summarize this and share this information back. At subsequent meetings and, uh, and online. Planning Commission will have their own opportunity to dive into this as well.
And are the online people meant to also put their comments?
They can put their comments in the chat.
One has already done something.
Work, the system work, the system works.
That was really just an excuse.
I, I had to test them out before I brought them to make sure they were.
Volunteer participants, can I pay you for your comments?
I don't know, we have eighteen people online, but not a lot of people make their comments in the chat, so. That's it, thank you. Give you a couple more minutes.
Don't be shy, that was your fault.
Let's call you out, but.
I was jealous that I did not. Put more thought into my choices.
Just another minute or so. All right, if you're still chewing on that one, feel free, but we're going to move on to the next one too. And if you want to come back and you can do this when this is all online, feel free to do that as well. What do you see as the most important places and or characteristics of Jericho that should be protected? Another minute or so. All right, and the last one. Are there new or different housing, businesses, shopping, entertainment? Transportation or recreational opportunities that you would like to see in Jericho? What kinds of things don't we have? In town that you'd like to see?
We have and we want more of.
Or have that we want more of, yep.
Like a brewery, say for example, just throwing it out.
Bakery.
Yeah.
Where house buys is that known, you know?
Nothing like a bagel shop.
Yeah.
All right, just one more minute and feel free to touch on any of the others if you didn't have time. All right, we will move on. Thank you all so much for your responses. Um, folks in the room, I'll collect your sticky notes here in a second. So just, uh, to summarize again, uh, ways for folks to, uh, to become more involved in this process. Um, the monthly meetings of the Planning Commission, uh, coming up over the next several months. Uh, the Community Forum at MMU in, in early April. Um, and be looking for a draft of the plan, um, in late spring. Where you can really see what we've come up with and help us understand what, what do we miss? Um, and.
Talking to me.
Uh, to the planning, just talk to the select one. I mean, there are so many. Uh, public bodies in Jericho, they're so actively engaged in all of these issues. Um, and we're working to engage with all of them as well, because they've got tremendous, uh, energy and, and information. Uh, to be brought together.
Actually, the Planning Commission will rely on. The other town committees for their domain expertise. So we saw some things in the chat about, um, bicycle pedestrian connections. Will be relying on input from the Trails Committee. And, um, we also would like to interact with the Safe Roots to School. Group, um, or specifics around that topic, for example.
I think, I think it's worth noting that. First, thank you everybody for giving us your suggestions here. The reason we've done this and the reason we also did the question of the month last month. Is the plan is not something that should come from the Planning Commission down. To come from the community up, so hearing what people are saying they want to have in the town, getting your feedback helps us. Work in planning for the town that will. Incorporate as much of those as is reasonable and feasible. So it's not, it's not just a great thanks for this, we're going to ignore it, it's great thanks for this, we need it to build a plan that works for Jericho. Don't hesitate to contact any of us. I'm in town. My, my email's on the Planning Commission. Give me an email, be happy to talk with any of you. Here and on, online. And I suspect that's true of all the rest of the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So are you concluded?
I am concluded, I'm going to stop sharing.
Okay.
And.
Uh, I'll say since we, we have a few extra minutes, um. If. Anybody either here or online wants to share any additional thoughts or comments, if you could. Use the raise hand. Feature to let us know, because like Eric said, we really, listening is our most important job. And we realize it's a hall for people to. Come online and carve out the time in your schedule and drive here to Town Hall, so we do want to take the opportunity. To listen to other, um, thoughts or questions that you might have, uh, we hope that this was. Helpful to set the stage. To make people feel a little bit maybe calm, that there are. Going to be many opportunities in many different formats for you to participate so that. You can noodle on things, you can. Do your research, you can talk to your family and your neighbors. You can observe when you're driving around Chittenden County or other parts of Vermont. Where you see other towns have been successful. That we can use as a role model, that's one of the things actually the Planning Commission generally does, spends a lot of time on. Is looking at success stories of other towns, actually not just in Vermont, but primarily in Vermont. Um, because it's hard, everything is theoretical when it's on a piece of paper. Um, take photographs and, um, share them with Linda, well, we, we have the idea of maybe having some sort of. Photographic photography based study at some point along the way, hasn't quite taken shape yet. Um, we have some ideas for some art projects, we have some ideas to engage students in our schools. And also teachers and staff who maybe don't live in Jericho, but they work in Jericho and other businesses in Jericho, so. We're not going to be able to do, we have a lot of ideas, we're not going to be able to do all the outreach that. We, um, have thought of, we won't. Really be able to conduct every single thing, and so I guess I would also encourage you to. Pick up the phone, um, come to a meeting, take the, take this as an invitation to spend the next. Six months really thinking about Jericho and. How you can help. Craft the future, if not. For you, for other people coming in after you. Being able to enjoy some of the benefits that you've been able to enjoy while you've been here. Hey, does anybody from the Planning Commission have anything to add or anything to ask?
I just want to say, in general, I think, um, thank you, David, that was a great. Uh, introduction to this project, um, I think the town is at a real crossroads. And I think the last chapter of our town has. Been marked more or less by complacency. As we've all enjoyed the great town that it is. But I think if we want to achieve a lot of the goals that we've talked about. We're going to have to really collectively challenge ourselves. Or it's not going to happen. So, as much as we're building on the town plan that we have, I think we also really need to, um. Be open to. Really pushing ourselves as a group, as a community. In order to achieve the goals that we're talking about, because otherwise I don't think it's going to happen. I think that. We can't just do. A simple revision of what we have, in a way, I think we have to. Think, um, beyond that.
Thank you, Chris, for saying that, because I, I was sort of rolling around. Um, how to frame that, but yeah, I think you did a really good job, because I agree, I think we are facing some very. Big challenges in our community and. This would be, like, and I know that we have such talented and smart people that live in Jericho and I would. Really love to see more people. Um, bring their gifts in, into the conversation, because I think collectively we have a lot of wisdom in our, in our community that. I would love to learn more from y'all.
No, just that I'm here to listen too, so everyone's, anyone's welcome to. Call me or send me an email, schedule a time to sit down and chat.
And I guess I would also say that, um. It's important to. Give each other the benefit of the doubt. Because there's not one right answer, there's not, we can't just wave a magic wand. There's not unlimited money, there's not unlimited funds, there's not unlimited time. And so we are going to be also talking about trade offs and priorities and. We're all volunteers. We have the benefit of working with professional planners, we're all, we've all learned a lot, the fortunately, the. Planning Commission has very good tenure, we've all been here in the job at least three plus years. And, um. We are really. Committed to doing an awesome job and to thinking outside the box and to. Listening, but we're not going to get it a hundred percent right. And on every single, on every single bit, and until the ink dries in December. We have, we have chances to learn and listen and debate. And change our minds and have the community be involved, so I, I would, I would ask that, um. People really. Understand that we are starting not quite from ground zero, but starting from, from a. A very open minded place about what the next iteration of this plan needs to be. And this is an ambitious group and it's a committed group. And, um, we're here because we love the community and want to serve the community and want to do a really good job with it. And so we need your help. To help us do the best job that we can.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that, um, we're trying to reach a really broad audience. I think, um, David Schuler made a really good point before, there was a different project that we did a few years ago and we. Um, not everyone who's here today was part of that project then. But it is true that people were left out and it was certainly not intentional. And we are continuously looking for ways to broaden that outreach so that we reach everyone in the town, which is a really monumental task. The goal is to include everyone so that everyone, if not participant. Based is at least aware, so that there's nothing that comes to fruition that affects people in a negative way. That we wouldn't have foreseen, right, it's impossible for each person to foresee every consequence. And that's why we need wide based participation, so. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors, everybody online, ta- talk about it, right?
And we should say also, like, the Join In Jericho website. Has a subscription feature, so if you want to make sure that you don't miss something. Has a subscription feature. So if you want to make sure that you don't miss something because it got posted, it was. One week you didn't read Front Porch Forum, you didn't see a poster at the market. If you want to receive updates directly into your personal email on every. Important announcement related to the project, you can go to the Join In Jericho website and subscribe. To receive updates and you'll receive. Updates from the, from the town on, um, which is not, it's, there's not like hundreds of them a week, but that will help to make sure. That um, people don't miss an upcoming meeting or an upcoming announcement. So if we could really boost the subscription, then we'll know we got our message out also. Uh, we're also looking at the website. Um, we have, uh, Sabina has, from the Planning Commission, has worked with. Linda and other people from the town staff. To update the website, to keep it current, to make it more engaging. So I think in the past, it's, it's, has not had the same amount of attention, but you can really learn a lot. There now about projects. So we talked about Riverside a little bit. There's an entire section of the. The town website that talks a little bit about, about Riverside. Uh, there is a new section on affordable housing and efforts from the Affordable Housing Committee. There's data and statistics about what's going on in Jericho related to housing. Um, there are every development review board application. That comes through that you can look at the plans and the materials. And the notes from the staff and the decisions that the, the Development Review Board makes. It's really. A wealth of information and um. We really have put a lot of time and effort into making it more useful. So. I would encourage people to look at that and look at it often and to subscribe so that you get the updates.
And I don't know if you mentioned it, but there is a copy of the current town plan there. You want to look through. Hundred and seventy-five pages, is it?
Yes, there's actually, David prepared a summary of the current town plan. That's a very condensed version. It's a little bit more detailed than what he did today, but you can kind of learn. Where we're starting from. And yes, it's like three hundred pages and it's smooth. And that's what we're, that's what we're aiming to fix. To make it more action oriented. Okay. Good, we did it. We got the website plug and our meeting schedule. Our work session. So early April at Mount Mansfield Union High School. We hope to have a very large facilitated, community wide conversation. About the town plan and we're circling around the date. We'll finalize the date shortly.
Can I just say one very brief thing? I appreciated what, what Eric said before, which was, this sets the conditions. By which someone else then needs to come in and make things happen. So if there's some reason why some things in town haven't been done at this neck of the woods, or that neck of the woods, it's, it's not really the town. As we perceive town government up to now, it has not been town's role to help make that happen. Just to create the conditions for someone else to make it happen. But to Eric's point and also to Chris's. You know, there's an urgency in this planning cycle. I've been around or nominally around the planning cycle on Jericho for probably twenty, twenty-five years. And there's an urgency about diverse housing stock that there has never. Been before. Twenty years ago, we were talking about, let's keep town the same. And wouldn't it be nice if we had a couple of units of affordable housing? End of discussion on affordable housing right there in the old days. It doesn't feel like that nationally or in our town. So I think for people who may be listening, this is a real opportunity. To say we have got to do something and frankly, we may need to. Staff a little bit differently, either in town government. So that we can have people advocate and help people. Manifest the town plan and we have not wanted to do that for forever. Um, and I, I think the conditions are such that I feel like. We may need somebody on the ground who's going to help make that happen. Uh, we're, we're trying, you know, we're comparing notes to big towns like Williston and whatever. And we've got sort of Mayberry RFD going on out here and it's just not cutting the mustard for what we got to get done. So. Anyway, just a thought, but I appreciate all your hard work, but that you're about to. Involve yourself in.
Thank you.
Talk to us when it's over.
That was Wayne House, let board member for anybody who wasn't aware of who was speaking. Okay, so are we good to go? Good to go? Okay. So we're, the planning group now is going to proceed to our regular meeting business. Um, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to. To bid farewell, whatever anybody wants to do.
It is exciting. You can stay and work.
Yeah, very exciting, yes.
I have three kids put to bed.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thanks for all the great work. Thank you. All right, thank you. Yes, they're gonna bring up the document. Okay, so our next topic is item number five, deciding the question of the month for January. So at our last meeting, we um, batted around a few things. David had subsequently confirmed the order of the topics that next meeting, February seventh. Will be around land use. And so this question was drafted kind of a joint effort between David, Steve, Linda and I. Taking the suggestions that were made at the previous meeting, whiling it down into something simpler. Somewhat of a focus on land use, but not exclusively around land use. And I think everyone saw the question at a time in email. So basically providing some background information, land use specific, I think, which will be helpful. Especially, we just talked about it, some of the questions that we had here. Um. A review of the policy, the current status, why it matters. Some of the impacts of that and then the three questions. Maybe if you could scroll down to the. Three questions which were similar to what David just asked, but, and we had a great turnout. This would be expanding similar questions to a much broader audience from tonight. What do you find challenging or concerning about living or working in Jericho? How could future growth and development affect? Your challenges, your concerns or your quality of life, either to the good or not to the good? And then what else do you want to share? Like last time, an open ended question. Um, Sabina and I talked about including demographics. It's really kind of tricky. We're not really doing like data. Based decision making based on the questions. We'll probably produce another word cloud. You know, here's the kind of the big picture. Feedback. So I'm interested to get some input or. Feedback from the Planning Commission on questions for January. So it would, it would be published. Soon after this meeting and we would have up until February sixth. So it would be about a three week window.
And you would include the tax above?
We, we need to end it in enough time for us to actually analyze. Yeah, it's a little bit of a tight.
Okay, so what do you think? Sorry, Sabina. I know, I'm sorry. So what would be like a reasonable?
Um.
Let's say. Third.
Five days before.
Yeah.
Okay, five days before.
What's the, maybe like after that weekend?
Tuesdays, we don't have meetings. And the next two Tuesdays, you're not. It'll be the first Tuesday in February, which I think is November February second or third.
So versus a Wednesday.
That's three weeks.
So we, could we go? Well, we could go to the end of the previous weekend, which would be say like Monday, January thirtieth, and then it would be the January question of one.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would still give us, publish it, say like Thursday-ish of this week. That would give almost two full weeks for responses.
So I'll, I'll jump in. I question the. Patience and validity of having a two and a half page, one long page explanation of why we're asking the question. And whether people have the patience to read through that. Or whether we will end up turning it into almost a homework assignment. So I'm, I'm a big fan of. Easy questions for people to answer. Then to get at difficult decisions we have to make. And I, I think when you have to spend a page explaining it.
I disagree, or I, I have a different opinion. Um.
You disagree too, but I have a different opinion.
I think, I think. I think we need to get people on the, on the same playing field. As, you know, to get that background information. They're just not going to have that same depth that we all have. And I think it's fair just to make them as educated on the matter. As we, as we can, before we're asking them to dive into the question. I think it's reasonable. And maybe we can shorten it somewhere, but.
Can you scroll back up to that informational page?
Yeah, what if you. The font is pretty big, I'll tell you that, so that we could display it. You know, that it would be.
Well, I. I only read it obviously while it was on the screen. Um. I do feel a little bit like you're feeding them the answer to question one.
Yeah.
So that's confusing for me if I'm a participant. That it's like, are you testing me whether or not I read that first page before I answer the question? Or are you thinking I'm going to say something different that you didn't include or what's the point?
So I had a similar thought about this specific increasing and decreasing. Where I was concerned that it was too much of um, like a presumptive close. You know, too much of like assuming what the issues would be and that we might learn more if we leave less. So if, if we took anything out. Made or shortened anything to me, the place where we could shorten it would be, why does it matter? Maybe make that a lot more general.
Even though, even the why though, is like the answer.
All of those are saying, these things aren't working. Gee, what do you think? Are you okay with that? Is, is the question we're asking ultimately? And I don't, at least it leads us to the question of, oh, we're not succeeding. We don't have infrastructure. Jericho's changing. Do I care?
Well, that's the difference, though. The question isn't, what do you think? The question is, how is it, is you?
Right, can you go back to.
Very personal. So that's the, the background. That is, I mean, that's the reality.
Right, I like the second question. How are you personally affected?
The reason David was um, advocating the first question is because people who came to the meeting tonight had the opportunity to. Answer that question. So people who didn't come should have the same opportunity. Maybe that question should be second. Maybe the order should be reversed. Except that the second question is kind of to address, you know, think about your own. Concerns. And then how would development affect? That concern, not just a general comment on what you think about development in Jericho.
Right, the questions came first. I flip it, like, because I, I had that, like, there's a lot of, a lot of information, right? Maybe not ever get to the questions, but there, there, you're like asking the question first and then it's like, this is, this is some of the things that we've observed.
Yeah, or, or if you say, with these questions in mind, please read the following.
Yeah.
I think the information on the first page is really important to communicate. But I think it's independent of the questions. I think the questions could stand on their own.
I, I sort of agree, but to me, those questions or those statements at the beginning. Are setting a. Direction for how you will answer it. There is, those are not neutral questions. Jericho is not succeeding in directing its growth. The, the straight up implication of it is that we want it somewhere else. We're not doing it where should it go? That's not in line.
But the reason I think it's really important to state these facts is that not everybody might be thinking about. The income tax or the tax rate.
Right.
Correlation to affordable housing and school population.
Yeah.
And so it's really important that people understand the direct correlation of those issues.
Yeah.
I just don't know if it has to be. Exactly tied to the questions.
Yeah. I agree. Like, I do not believe that greater than half of the population makes the connection between. The complacency that we've experienced in the last two decades and the fact that their taxes are going up. I don't, I don't believe that that's a thing that people are getting to. I don't think they understand. The mathematical equation that is used to reach your personal property tax bill. And I show people tax bills all the damn time. Well, what do you think my taxes are going to be? Do you think my taxes are going to go up? Yes, yes, I do in this town. Would you like to know why? Because we don't have the school age population, because we don't have businesses, because we aren't increasing the tax base. And because we have a population that is low in poverty, so the state funded allowance coming to our schools is lower. And that's how it works. But again, I can tell people that and I don't think they're going. So you're telling me I should expect my property taxes to go up in the next fifteen years, even if. Even if nobody builds anything and I'll say yes, because no one's building anything.
I think previously, the assumption was that the more building there was, the higher the taxes would be. Because then you need more roads and you need more sidewalks to extend the sewer system. But for us, since we have had so little of that kind of investment, it is the opposite. Um, as an aside, I am thinking that in the proper work session to have um. Either like one of the listeners come in and give us like a, give us like a good tutorial on how the taxes are structured and how they work. Because I know we sort of all know, but to put it on the public. Come and understand so that we can relate it directly to what our decisions are.
We could also post, um, the way the town plan website is, we could post this. Information on, as like an update and then we could have the question of the month on a separate. Tab, am I describing that right? So the, the, this data would be there and the questions would also be there, but they wouldn't sort of like live in the same space. That makes sense.
Or we can put this in the introduction of the question, but then once you get into the survey, you're not seeing this in front of you anymore. But yeah, we can, we can do it either way. We have options.
If we do that, though, we just. When you write surveys that have. Uh, intentionality or a way of phrasing things to lead to a certain answer. You will get that answer, which is not necessarily the answer you want. So I would encourage us if we're going to do this. Jericho's current policy is to do this. Rather than saying current status is we're not succeeding, would be to say current status at present, this type of growth is not occurring. It's a very different thing than saying it's not succeeding. It's just the, the fact is, it's a neutral, it has to be neutral language. Or else we're just going to steer someone to say, gosh, that's the worst thing that could possibly happen. We have to make it succeed. And that may not be what people actually want.
Right.
So that's, that's my complaint around this. When we say the lack of infrastructure, we could say infrastructure is needed. To make this zoning happen. That, that makes a clear statement that you have to take an action. Lack of infrastructure means we don't have to do anything. We're happy with it. Let's let it go.
Right, yep. Okay.
That's a really good point.
And then what, what do you, what do you, what are your thoughts about listing out all of those? Why does it matter?
I think that could also be a front porch forum post right there. Just, I think we need to get this information in front of people, so that they really understand why this matters.
I think Jericho is changing. You, you don't need to have the increasing or the decrease and just. These are all things, because increasing and decreasing also have negative and positive connotations.
Right. All of those things are negative, basically.
Well, it depends on your perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah, true. Good point.
I mean, if you're fat cat, you might be very. I mean, if you're fat cat, you might be very happy with the way it is right now.
Yeah. And if you're worried that school enrollment means more, more students and more taxes to support for those students, that's not a good thing.
Right. If you don't understand the inverse relationship between declining school enrollment and increased taxes. Then you why would you see that as negative?
Right. Great. We have declining school enrollment. My taxes will go down.
Even better, a higher student teacher, a lower
Yeah, a lower That's right. That's a good thing. Let's go. Let's do it. No new people. Done.
It also, this might be too early in the process. Is it, or that's a question. Is this, is it too early in the process to share that those details, that increasing and decreasing? We've been asleep for too long.
I might take away the increasing and decreasing, saying things that are changing are.
Yeah.
All of these. Those are, those are simple facts. They don't, when you say it's changing, you're not putting a positive or negative connotation for it.
But it's just saying that school enrollment is changing is not necessarily informative because it could be, if, if you don't know
You could say school enrollment is declining.
But increasing and decreasing are not uh, judgmental. They're, they're they're purely descriptive. Those are simply facts.
I think what I'm wondering is about, like, we can, we could talk about this portion of the narrative for a while, but the questions, like, are we happy with the questions? As written, or do we want to change those at all? Can we make a decision about that and then maybe circle back to the content above?
So question two is a hard one for me. How could future growth and development affect, improve or worsen your challenges, concerns or quality of life? Uh, for me, it's future growth or lack of. It's, it's not just, if it does happen. I don't want to be Williston, right? Like all the I don't wantos. If it doesn't happen. Then I consider that much worse. So how do you, how do you ask the question in such a way that it lets people say, you know, I'm more afraid of it not changing than changing.
Question to ask right there. Are you more afraid of changing Jericho or Jericho staying the same?
Yeah, that's a good point. Are you more afraid of the growth or maintaining the status quo?
Concern instead of afraid?
Yeah, concerned. Or which affects you more? But again, if you haven't explained the math around property taxes, I don't know if people are going to make that connection and say, oh, wait. Static conditions are bad for me.
Well, we, it's not so much that they're bad, like we've heard desires.
Yeah.
Desires for meeting places, desire for more dining, desire to, for my kid to be able to walk to their friend's house.
Right. And desire to remain in the community when you don't need a three or four bedroom house anymore.
Right.
And desire to maintain the rural character, desire to maintain the roads and pathways, desire to keep the forest free areas forested. They're conflicting desires. You can't easily have both of those. And that puts us in planning permission in a difficult place because we can't meet two diametrically opposed requirements.
I'm not sure they're diametrically opposed.
Preserve open space and build more housing.
If you concentrate development in the village centers.
Yeah.
Then
Don't make it
and don't make it Williston.
There's some beautiful three D printed houses that are coming out of United States of Maine.
Pretty deep link between where we are now and where Williston is.
Yeah.
I think we could do a lot of
I agree. There's a lot of space.
Development and not be anywhere near Williston.
There's a lot of white space.
Was about twenty five years ago.
That's why we're in the room. That's why I'm in the room. It's exactly why.
So we are planning for twenty five years in the future.
Yes.
We need to keep that in mind.
What it, so the first question, is everybody cool with the first question? Knowing that it was motivated to try to provide the opportunity for people to come. Okay.
What do you like or dislike about living in Jericho?
Well, that's not what we asked today about, asked about challenge. The second question. Is there a companion, can the, that question stay or maybe revise a little bit? But then is there a companion question like how could the status quo or how could remaining the same or how could doing nothing, or I don't know what the right frame is, but how could the status quo affect, improve or worsen your challenges, concerns or quality of life to get at? Kind of like if we do something, if nothing really changes, tho- those two, either as the same as two A and two B or
What could you say? What would you most like to see change and what would you least like to see change?
I like that.
I like it better.
I think we get some interesting answers.
I mean, or you can add, how could future growth and development or lack thereof affect, improve or worsen your challenges, concerns or your quality of life? That's a, I'm not a fan of run on sentences. That's a mouthful.
Right. We can take out improve or worsen and just say effect. And then leave it up to people to think about that way. That's less leading, probably, Eric, to your point. And then it makes it a little bit.
Would you tell me to take out challenges and challenges? Just how could your concerns, just leave it, how could future growth and development affect your quality of life? Let's, let's take out challenges. Underneath, you could say, tell us your challenges or concerns about them. But we're asking about
Right. That's true, because we asked that in the first. I mean, sort of the, the thought we had was that we're trying to engage more smart creative minds on solutions. Right? It's one, you know, so that, so number two is really driving at, okay. How, and also we, we're responsible for land use and growth. And there's a lot of other things that we're not responsible for. And so it's also trying to narrow the frame and say, how could maybe it just said should be future development. That simplifies it, future growth, one or the other. How could future growth affect your challenges that you've just told us about? Because everybody can go up with everything that's wrong. We don't, it's not a good use of our time. I mean, it is obviously because we have a lot of resources to come up with solutions, but one of the, you know, the wisdom of the crowd.
How about, you say, affect your challenges or opportunities? Given it a positive and a negative.
Yeah.
And, but I, I I think, I think you're, you're correct. So I want to how could future growth impact the challenges you identified above? We're linking the two together. I think that, that gets at what we're trying to accomplish.
I, I can edit on the document.
That would be sad.
But if you could just zoom in on that lab.
Yep. Number two, how could future growth or development impact?
Well, growth or development, pick one. They're the same thing.
Let's go with growth. Growth, that's what we're trying to that's what people either want controlled or managed or whatever.
Right. And development's more of a zoning.
And we're taking out improve or worsen?
Yeah.
And, and just can we, I, I'm suggesting we take that, affect the challenges you mentioned above.
Yeah. What if the challenges have nothing to do with growth?
How would they not?
Well, it could be
A challenge concerning about living and working Jericho.
It's pretty broad. It's a broad question.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe the answer is they can't. Like, growth isn't the answer.
Challenges on getting older. I can't live here. How's future growth?
Yeah, the challenge is, you know, I have three new noisy neighbors and now you're going to give me five more new, you know what, right? So growth, so that's why, right, exactly. I mean, a lot, some people, growth is worse. They're worried about traffic. They're worried about the woods. They're worried about their dog. They're worried, you know.
But this, uh, question two right now, as it stated, implies that growth is a negative. So I would like to say I think it should be a negative or a positive.
Yeah.
Because really what what we're doing is doing the new plan more or less to promote growth. So I don't think we want to say that it's, it's just a challenge.
We're trying to manage growth.
I meant, I imagined growth would in, would address your challenge. Like if future growth brought in whatever senior housing, then my challenge about aging in place could be addressed. But I think we understand that nuance a lot more than so how, I, I I agree with Chris that maybe how could future growth affect your challenges mentioned above? Or, or not though, because maybe your challenges have nothing to do, like we're saying. Your challenges could be, you know, you don't get in love, you don't get along with your mother in law. Growth has nothing to do with that. Like, people have a lot of challenges.
Already qualified enough for walking, about living and working in Jericho.
Right.
If your mother in law lives, he works in Jericho, I mean. I'm sure your mother in law is wonderful.
He is. She's fabulous. Future growth, so but taking on Chris's comment, affect your challenges mentioned above or opportunities? And maybe impacted is a better word than affect. I think you said that, Eric.
Yeah.
Just affect you. I'm sorry. I know we probably shouldn't be, I mean, why add all that? You know, let people decide what that means to them. How could future growth affect you?
Thank you.
Yes.
Let's, let's qualify that with how could Jericho's future growth affect you?
And are we leaving out the context of, um, smart growth in this equation? Are we, are we just leaving out the table because we want a broader response?
Yes.
Yes.
You're talking about the pre, the text? Wait, are you saying the, referring to the text above, which is basically smart growth policy?
Right.
The explanation of the text above?
Or, yeah, future growth.
I, I think it would be really useful and relate more to our previous community outreach to just state the questions. I think the first page is incredibly important to get out to the public. But I don't know that it needs to be directly tied to these questions.
One of the things I keep coming back to is like, and we talked about this at the last meeting when we were deciding on the other questions is what's the goal of this? And, and if the goal was, if, if one of the primary goals was engagement. And then we want questions that are more easily answered. I think then like, I, I agree that education is important, but if, if the primary goal is engagement, then I think the questions have to be pretty straightforward. And easy to answer.
And we can have that other piece as to learn more about smart growth and smart growth goals. Read here.
Yes, Sabina already made a smart growth page.
And you can just put a link in this, in the survey to that website, right?
Does it make sense to have someone open ended? You've got, what else do you want to share with the planning commission about land use, growth and development at Jericho? You know, just an open, are there any other, any other issues you'd like the planning commission to address?
Yeah, we're trying to inform our discussion on February seventh about land use and from the comments that we usually see, I think most people feel very comfortable sharing whatever they think is important for us to know regardless of the question. So I'm not too worried about that. Okay. So we're good to go. And the due date will be January thirty first.
Survey closes January thirty first.
Yes.
At midnight.
Okay, and we're going to try and beat hundred and twenty six or whatever we have.
How about a raffle winner for all the people that entered?
For a raffle, people have to give their identity. And what we found is that when it was out for a few days and you had to register, we got very few responses. And when we made it in, we got it's not true.
But we got also some question about people.
Complaints.
I would, I would volunteer to spring for a ten dollar gift certificate to Alan Bean. To anybody who wants to submit for him, put it into a raffle.
So how does it work? Can they, can you have
So want to.
You can't even go on
Ten dollars or five dollars or something, but
Would you have a, you could have a question and let people put in their email? How would you let If you, if you wanted to identify people in the survey, but not necessarily require registration, could we just have a fourth question?
Yeah, you can make an optional fourth question.
Email optional.
You would like to be entered in a drawing. Please include your email.
Drawing of the month.
Drawing of the month.
Question four, optional email. Yes. Can we do that? Or you don't like that idea, Sabina?
What? No, I'm just anticipating a collation of a hundred and fifty emails, but are random.
But you have to print them all out.
You put them in a spreadsheet and then you use a random number generator for people that will
I was gonna say, I'll do it if you don't.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not that difficult. Is that what you're thinking?
Or you put them all in your spreadsheet and then you walk down and you say, Jessica, pick a number between a hundred and forty. And she says twenty two and there's your winner. She doesn't know what email twenty two is.
She doesn't even know what
Question. Now you see how sausage is made?
Dangerous.
Okay, moving on to item number six, drive a motion to approve minutes, January third.
I moved to approve the minutes.
Moves to approve second.
Second.
Chris, up there first.
He did.
Any comments or corrections on the minutes?
Well, thank you.
All is in favor of approving minutes? Okay, next item. Does anyone have anything to report about events that happened in the past? Such as any of your liaison updates or takeaways from webinars or conferences, right, like that?
Well, the housing committee, affordable housing committee had a lot of discussion around um, trying to understand issues about Vermont law, trailer parks, how they come into place. We've been looking a lot at the percentage of Jericho that's in rental units, as well as the percentage of the Jericho grand list that would qualify as affordable, affordable being to someone who makes between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. And one of the things that our wonderful leader S J put together was through a look and collation at the grand list and the appraised values from the last update, which I think was twenty sixteen. Roughly thirty five percent of Jericho houses in that grand list would be affordable to that that lower range. So we, those are houses that right now would be at around three hundred and fifty and Susan, Sarah, you may be able to validate.
Value in the list, in the grand list?
Yeah. From twenty fifteen, then we added some inflators to it to get to current values. From twenty fifteen that we added some inflators to it to get to current values.
I'm sorry. So my house. Is I just. Use my math. My house is on the grand list at one eighty seven. I believe the fair market value of my house to be closer to four eighty five. So even if you doubled it. Even if you doubled it, I think you're way off.
So the twenty sixteen grand list value using the twenty sixteen um maximum. Price purchase price, sorry. You're right Sabina, I apologize. Sarah Jane Duby. Or S J. Um so. We used because the grand list is so old, I just used the V H F A's. Uh maximum purchase price affordability rankings from twenty sixteen. And use that to look at the grand list twenty sixteen, just to get a feeling for at that. In twenty sixteen, what was the diversity of the housing stock on the grand list? Um and so using those same cutoffs, so eighty percent and under being low. Um eighty percent A M I up to one twenty percent A M I being middle. And then anything above one twenty percent A M I being high and using the. Maximum purchase price um for a two or three bedroom home. Um those were how I use those count those. Those cutoffs and forty four percent of homes on the grand list in twenty sixteen were high. So more than half were middle or low.
And then you added an inflator to that.
I did it, I did the.
Sale prices of houses that were sold.
I did the the calculations a couple of different ways to try and estimate and see, okay, well, if we add. If we multiply everything by the C P I and we do this, that and the other thing and we use today's uh eighty percent and a hundred twenty percent A M I cutoffs. What does that look like? And every way I kind of looked at it. I got roughly the same numbers with about forty to forty six percent being high. All of that is to say, the estimates are only as good as the data and the data is not good. Um but I think it is interesting because so much of what. Data I have been looking at and and the committee has been looking at and presenting is current sales data. And that doesn't give us a flavor for what does the state of housing in Jericho as a whole look like? Um not just what's for sale because people aren't, many people aren't selling their homes because they want to stay here and they're the whole thing. Um and so this was a way to try to kind of get at, okay, well, what kind of diversity do we already have? What already exists in Jericho? And is it that we are? Um is it that we are a town with a lot of large single family homes? Or are we a town with a lot of mixed? Stock and we do have about twenty percent of houses. Were, I think it was twenty percent of houses were two bedrooms or smaller. Um we had a lot more multifamily dwellings than I would have thought. Um so you know, yes, eighty some odd percent of our housing stock is single family detached. Um but we do have variability. Um it's not what is being built and it's not what is being sold. Um but I think it's important when we think about what is Jericho and who who are we right now as a community? Um that we we look at the whole picture. So that's how we tried to kind of get at that.
Uh yeah, I think it's a great place to start. I think it's definitely an indicator, which is not just Jericho, but everywhere that even though people have huge equity in their homes built over the past five to ten years. Specifically in the last. Thirty six months. There. They can't afford to leave. They can't afford to go to that house. If you live in a, if you're a. A single person or a couple and you live in a three bedroom home, you can't afford to leave that small three bedroom home because there's nowhere for you to go. There's not, like you said, there's not the move. The move down downsized inventory.
Equally important, I think, is if we want to add people to the community.
Right.
Is can they afford? To buy whatever is going to be new.
One of the things that comes out from it is. That we have the significant shortage. In the place for you to move down to from the house that you you're in. And in terms of quality, in terms of location, in terms of features and functions. We need to find a way to break the logjam. We need more of the housing at the lower end. We know that it's not being built. And there's nothing that says it has to be built. For coming up the housing ladder. And not coming down the housing ladder. So that that I think is an important. Realization that that we have of.
I think it's helpful to see too that. Um there's a lot of fear about. Drastically changing Jericho and changing who we are and and what we look like in the community that we have. And I think that there's, you know, there is the fear of becoming Williston. Um and I I. Don't think that that's what any of us are proposing. Um I will speak for myself, sorry. I'm not envisioning anything that looks like what what Williston has. Even if that was my vision, it's not one that I could accomplish here. Um but I think that there is a fear that we're gonna by prioritizing lower and middle income. Income housing that we're going to change the. The look or the feel of the town and what this did was say, oh no, by not doing this. The chain, we are changing the look and feel of the town because now we're shifting into a whole nother.
Right.
Place that that isn't representative of who Jericho is and has.
It's what you said before, the market is driving. High end homes and that is what is being built and there's room for that and there's demand for that. But tho- those are the homes back to what what was on that sheet before. Those are the homes that the builders can afford to build.
Right.
And there's demand for those. It's not that there's not demand at every other price point. There is. It's that because of rising costs and labor costs. They can't afford to build those. So the only way that we balance it out, like we said, is to subsidize. The other homes.
The housing committee is doing. Thank you, Esther.
Yeah.
Um it's it's I think we're making very good progress coming up with some guidelines for the planning commission of what. The planning commission should be should be targeting for where growth occurs and what kind of housing comes up in there. Um there is clearly a shortage of housing in Jericho.
Yeah, uh um I just have one comment to that, which is that there's a shortage of housing in Chittenden County. There's a shortage of housing in Vermont. There's a shortage of housing nationally. So. Even if we. I'll loosely say with air quotes, solve our problem by meeting some really great aggressive goals like forty five units of new housing and. Fifteen of them affordable or what you know, whatever number we all adopt. It's not a one time. One year, one plan. It's not like over.
We're not an island.
We're not an island. No.
Okay, any other liaison updates? Okay, upcoming events, anything in the future? Everybody got the invitation and everybody RSVP for Friday. Um and Sarah's gonna be our spokesperson there because I cannot attend. Um. So we can huddle about that, but you're probably good to go. Any other business?
I just wanted to share that the um. All the wastewater feasibility study surveys went out in the mail today. So if anyone lives in any of the villager, three village areas, you look to your mailbox to get a survey and please fill it out. Um you can either fill it out in on paper. And we put it in a return envelope so that it's already stamped and you just have to put it in the mailbox or there is also a Q R code on there so you can scan it with your phone and fill it out.
What is that survey exactly?
So it's a survey um that the consultant that we're working with DuBois and King is sending out to residents in all three village areas. Just kind of collect um feedback on. Whether people, you know, well, first of all, it's collecting data about their existing septic systems. Um and then it was is also collecting data on, you know, whether or not they'd be interested in connecting to a sewer. If there were to be one and there's some questions about um. Assessing whether they're they have concerns about. Either developing a sewer system or not developing a sewer system and what were some of the other questions?
A little bit about water.
A little bit about water primarily.
Wastewater, how old is your system? Has it had any problems? Um do you know if you have a state? Approved septic comment on file with state and so what you what you what can you tell us about it? Um it and it's optionally anonymous as well.
Yeah.
I I do want to make an amendment to my affordable housing committee because I looked at the wrong date on my calendar. Now, we did also talk about land banks and how they operate and whether or not them would be something that would be suitable as a way for us to take property in Jericho. Have the town of Jericho participate. We're not sure exactly how they work, but Jericho town or entity would buy the property. Fix it up so it can be developable and then move it out in the market space. So that's something that we will continue to explore. Which. Strikes me as being having some very interesting opportunities as well for. The town to set the stage for somebody else to build on a spot that right now is not being used appropriately. It's an active committee.
Plan for for the intention of developing into the golf course now.
Uh I'm not sure, we'll have to look into that.
Yeah, I think it was last year.
I guess we should ask though. Okay, so for upcoming events, Linda's just reminding me. We'd originally said April third for the community forum at the high school. David has a potential scheduling conflict and we would like to move it to April tenth. Linda, check the high schools available. If that works for the majority of the planning commission.
It is Easter Monday.
It is Easter.
And it's also Passover.
Yeah, let's pass over.
So none, so stick with April third. So the risk is. Or in the eleven.
Passover doesn't end until the thirteen.
So we stick with the third, the risk is that David might not be able to be there. So Steve can be there as the and David. Would. Likely be there.
It's all about.
Right.
The airlines.
Right.
Right? How much faith do you have?
You would have to be prepared to pinch hit. And I guess the onus would really primarily fall on Steve. If he's game for that.
Is this the World Cafe format?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I'm assuming we would all be helping. Matter of like the main, the main M C.
Yeah.
I think like we saw tonight, it's very helpful to have a neutral. Expert who's not. On the planning mission leading the discussion. So as long as Steve has a primary role. Okay. Alright, so sticking with April third. Alright, so our next meeting, February seventh will be land use. February twenty first, we're starting to percolate on the agenda for that.
We have the local concern maybe slated for that for our uh for the um. We have the. Route fifteen path.
Yes, you're right. Yes.
Yes. Wait, uh what we.
Okay, so do you want to give a brief?
Sure, um.
Explanation of that?
Yeah, on February twenty first, we offered uh our meeting, a portion of our meeting time slot to. Uh is it Stan?
Yeah.
Stan Tech, who is the um consultant that the town's working with to do. Uh scoping study looking at um. A way to connect a bike compared bike compared pedestrian connection between Jericho Corners and Riverside. Either along Route fifteen or. Potentially the old railroad bed um between Raceway Road and Route fifteen. And so they. Uh want to do what's called a local concerns meeting where they're gonna present, you know, the information that they've collected so far and invite the public and um. Aboutting property owners to come and listen to their presentation and get some feedback on what they've. Collected so far.
When is that? February twenty?
Twenty first.
Right, so our planning commission meeting. Like tonight, half the meeting will be for that.
And how are we gonna inform the local landowners that may be impacted?
We're gonna have to go get their uh use the. Get the mailing addresses from the town. They're gonna. Do our best to contact all of them, I think, using our local network.
Okay, because the trails committee does have a list of landowners impacted by the. Railroad bed connection.
And and we just had to fill out the Valley's Edge who was on, we should actually include him.
Yeah.
But the Valley's Edge Homeowners Association.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had a the a list of the parcels that they thought would be affected.
I have the trails committee and they have a different one, but I have one. Said it to me. Okay, great.
Okay, anything else on the next two meetings? Wake up in the middle of the night and think of something. Email me.
Uh a bri- a brief question, is the presentation that you gave, is that available in a PDF format? So I could just share that to the trails committee?
It will be.
On the town website or where were you? Okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna post it to the website and also M M C T V. Agreed to create a condensed version of it, edited. Celebrated so that for people who couldn't attend tonight, that'll be there too. So we'll promote that when it's done. It would probably take a little bit of time to do. Yes, yes. Okay, how much time if you tell us which parts you want? Yes. Okay, executive session, we don't need it. A motion to adjourn. Eric, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Back in.
Second.
Sarah, second, all those in favor of adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Really appreciate you wanting to participate then.